Good evening and welcome to the Anacortes City Council Meeting of November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. And I'd like to call the meeting to order. And Ms. Swetnam, would you take the role, please?
Councilmember Carter.
Present.
Councilmember Young. Councilmember Walters.
Here.
Councilmember Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Councilmember Moulton.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember McDougal.
Here.
Councilmember Hubick.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Carter.
I move to excuse Mr. Young from tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Carter and a second by Ms. Hubick to excuse Mr. Young. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Uh, on to our next item, which is the Pledge Allegiance. All right, uh, next up, announcements and committee reports and just a minor, a couple minor changes, uh, one minor change to the agenda orders, uh, Flops C and D, so Community Development Block grant will come before the Resolution thirty-one, thirty-nine. Okay, but I do have a, a number of announcements before I get to the committee reports, so I'll start with, uh, um, hoping that everybody had a wonderful, uh, weekend of Thanksgiving as a traditional start to our holiday season, so with that, many exciting events are happening in Anacortes and I'll, uh, start, uh, in somewhat chronological order, I hope, uh, that reminding the, I'd like to remind the community that the Art Walk is this Friday night, December third, and our own nine-eight-two-two-one gallery here at City Hall will be open from six to eight P. M. There will also be a Christmas tree lighting this Friday. Uh, that program starts at six P. M., the lighting somewhere between six-thirty, six-forty-five, uh, for our coastal Christmas tree lighting. There will also be an art, and again, these are just some of the highlights, there's always great things to do, uh, Arts Festival Holiday Fine Art Show opening night at Buxton's at six to nine P. M., and then they'll be open through December tenth, uh, not consecutively though, but just the opening is six to nine. And then on, uh, Saturday the third, a holiday parade, uh, again, that helps to kick off the holiday season organized by the, uh, Lions Club of Anacortes. Uh, participants will assemble around ten A. M. and the parade will start at eleven. Also Saturday, Creative Avenue Holiday Market at the Depot, ten A. M. to three P. M. on Saturday and Sunday. So yes, there's another big event, but I'll get to that in just a second. Uh, okay, um, some other announcements, Island Hospital has passed along an update, uh, so if you didn't know, they're, uh, have their construction project, emergency services construction project, so the main entrance lobby on the Twenty-Fourth Street will require temporary lobby closure and reroute through the court, uh, and a, and reroute through the courtyard, and that will be in place starting November twenty-seventh through December eighth. So during that period, please follow the designated signage and instructions to ensure smooth transition in and out of the main entrance. Our avenue improvements, uh, we're into our fourth week, uh, onto that project and we are making good progress, uh, thanks to some help from Mother Nature, good, um, lack of rain helps, should be obvious if you're even passing along the detour, this project is not just about the roundabout at R. and Thirty, but multiple intersections and significant sidewalk enhancements, uh, thanks to Public Works, uh, they continue to monitor the traffic flow and continue to work with business, businesses and residents in the area to minimize construction impacts as we work to improve our streets, so again, thank you for your understanding and patience. And then, uh, my final announcement, uh, big time, congrats to our Anacortes Seahawks' High School Football Team and their thirty-four to twenty victory over Enham Claw over the weekend, uh, so they made history, uh, and, uh, thanks to that victory Saturday, the Seahawks will advance, um, um, to the state final, uh, to face undefeated Tombwater. So, uh, we're all very proud of the team and our hats, uh, also go off not to the team, and not only to the team, but to our own Coach Anderson, who we're proud to call him, uh, a member of our own city staff. So championship game will be at Husky Stadium this Saturday at, uh, three P. M. this Saturday the third, go Hawks. All right, uh, on to other announcements, committee reports, uh, Fiber Committee is Yeah, all right, well, we can, we can wait. So, Mr. McDougal.
Mayor Miller.
Okay.
Um, last, the week before last, actually, Thursday, um, Ms. Hubick and myself and the, uh, Fiber Department met and we went through some numbers, uh, very quickly, we are at, um, I think just a bit over twenty-two-hundred customers at this point, so, um, very good number there, and overall grand total, like, take rate across the city is, uh, just below forty-seven percent, so I think, you know, as, as things have been growing, as, like, we reach more neighborhoods, we're actually, like, I think it's realistic to hit a fifty percent take rate, uh, sometime next year. Uh, let's see, what other stuff did we cover? Yeah, the EDA grant area has been sort of divided up into four sections, uh, cap sandy, kind of relative area, then, uh, kind of a, like, call it North D. Avenue, uh, and surrounding neighborhoods, and then South, sort of like A. Avenue and surrounding neighborhoods, and then kind of the fill-in from, um, East and West of Commercial, South of about Twenty-Second, and then kind of up toward the, the forest lands there. I forget, I think we've got an estimated sort of order of construction. I forget which order actually the, the four go in. Um, we also went through some financials and things overall, like, looking, looking very strong, we've definitely got, uh, construction, um, loan that will, that we have to, to pay off, and then, you know, we'll be assuming, uh, another loan to sort of like roll everything into, uh, but the overall financials, just from a cash flow standpoint, are looking good.
All right, thank you. And next up is Planning Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Sorry, Ms. Cleland McGrath, did you want to go?
Ms. Moulton and then Ms. Cleland McGrath, if she wants to go.
Okay, she can fill in, fill in if, um, I leave anything out. Um, we talked about one of our priorities for next year is, um, finding money in the budget for the environmental impact study for the Gwimis Channel Trail from, um, the ferry landing east, and we still don't have a firm estimate on how much that will cost, but maybe in the ballpark of four hundred thousand dollars. Um, so, we need to figure out where we're going to take that money from in the budget, and we will get creative in order to do that. Uh, we talked a little bit about easements for the trail in a kind of general way, and also permitting requirements and impacts on the near shore and identifying those, um, critical and sensitive areas and have best to, um, have best to respect those, not do any damage. Um, and that was pretty much it, we did a little exploring and OpenGov too, um, and that was, that's it, yeah.
Cleland McGrath, anything else to add? Okay. All right, any other announcements or committee reports? All right, we are on to our, uh, public comment period of the meeting, and this is an opportunity for any member of the public who wishes to address the council anything that is not on our agenda, uh, but I do have, uh, we did receive a written public comment from the, uh, Anacortes Senior Center Foundation, so that, uh, should have been, that has been added to the packet, so there's a letter there, and I do have, uh, Mr. Kirk Kennedy signed up, and if you wanted to talk about this public comment, and you can go ahead. And I also have a, sorry, Linda Martin signed up about the budget and that, uh, if you want to wait for when we talk about the budget piece, we can do that. Okay, so, Mr. Kennedy, and name and what city?
Kirk Kennedy, uh, Anacortes, uh, for almost twenty years now. Um, I'm a, uh, board member of the, uh, uh, foundation as well as several others that are, are sitting next to me here for, for, uh, support, but, um, uh, I've also been a volunteer at the Senior Center for almost eighteen years, and, uh, which is about as long as Lee Devere has been there, and, uh, part, that's partly because of the reason we're here, Lee, uh, announced her retirement and she'll be leaving, uh, in, in December, and, uh, she has been such a, um, uh, instrumental part of, of what was, uh, we've had going on there, so, uh, uh, her, uh, departure is going to present some changes, but it also, we feel it presents an opportunity, and, um, um, there's been some significant changes within Anacortes demographics that outlined in the letter, but just to make you aware that the, um, the population, uh, grew in the last, well, from twenty-twelve to twenty-twenty-one, about ten years, population grew ten percent in Anacortes. During that same period of time, the population of the sixty-five and over grew thirty-five percent, when, which means, uh, the growth that we saw, that ten percent growth, seventy-eight percent of that growth was for the, the, the older population, so, um, and how does that compare to others, uh, we're twenty-nine percent, uh, total sixty-five percent, or sixty-five and over versus Burlington and Mount Vernon is at seventeen, so again, um, there's a, a change going on, and, um, the, the Senior Center has played such a, a remarkable part in that, um, uh, in, in keeping them, um, uh, addressing the needs of that community. The Center has been a great partnership between the city and the county and the foundation. Uh, we go beyond providing, uh, lots of funds for, uh, extra activities and programs that maybe would not have been done. We actually first funded, uh, Lee as thirty-two an hour, thirty-two hours, uh, a, uh, a, a week so that we can get more done, and now with her retirement and it's going into the twenty-twenty-four budget, we're just asking you to consider, um, uh, maybe expanding that to forty hours so that we can continue to, um, provide the high level of service and, um, uh, support and added programs, uh, for the, uh, for this, uh, the seniors of this community. So, any questions, be happy to answer, uh, but, uh, we certainly appreciate the consideration.
Well, I know just from the city, we, we appreciate everything the foundation does to support the, the Senior Activity Center and can't do it without that additional support, so I can't, I can't thank the Center enough for, the foundation for helping us out, and certainly, you know, one of the expenses that we did already, we already added to the budget was the additional cost for Meals on Wheels as one example, and you're, you're down, I always love the demographics, so we know that, that, uh, that's increasing, so that's, that's a cost that we will pay, and, uh, certainly it's a pretty reasonable, reasonable ask, we'll just have to figure out the, uh, the mechanics of that.
Okay.
Any questions for? Okay, well, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Um, so, again, Linda Martin, if you're okay waiting for the, uh, budget portion of the discussion, because I think we might need to have some primer for that one a little bit, and anybody else wish to address the council, anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, all right, we will move on to Item Five, which is our Consent Agenda, and Consent Agenda Items A, B, and C, and also a minor change in your packet was an update to the routing of the special event application, because as you all probably are aware, there's some construction going on down there with the ports project, so council.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
Make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda Items A through C.
Motion by Ms. Hubick, a second by Mr. Carter to approve Consent Agenda Items A through C, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are on to other business and, uh, give Mr. Stefan a little bit of extra time to come up here, but our other business is, again, this is an opportunity to ask any additional questions about the budget, uh, Mr. Stefan's gonna fill in again for Mr. Hoagland, uh, this is twenty-twenty-four budget discussion, and it's a discussion item only, uh, we're certainly aware of the, uh, few members of council that have, uh, asked about the EIS, as you all are probably aware, you know, WashDOT set aside some, uh, funding for it, but unfortunately, it's twenty-twenty-seven, so certainly if it's council's desire to move that, move that funding up, we can probably make it happen, our best guess is Parks Reserve in order to pay for that, but we're still working on, uh, how to, how to pay for that, so, again, any other, uh, budget items, this would be a good time to have that discussion. All right, so with that, I gave you more than enough time to set up your three slides or whatever you got, Mr. Stefan.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, good evening, members of council, members of the audience, uh, this time is, as the mayor mentioned, um, where we can discuss items of the budget, if you have questions or, um, would like a, a specific information, we can discuss it, I can try to answer things using our OpenGov charts, and this is also a time that we're gonna take, take your input and, because we're, we're developing the budget book, which will be publishing on Wednesday, hopefully, um, and the budget book and the CFP, uh, packets will be prepared, and that's, we're just, another night that we can discuss it so that we're ready to approve those, uh, when they come up.
Yeah, and it's, it's a pretty big step that we've, uh, put, I really appreciate the hard work of the staff to put this budget book together, because it's something that we haven't traditionally done at this point, and, uh, getting it all together, um, will be great. Um, okay, but maybe to start the discussion since, so I don't forget, uh, Linda Martin, if you want to come up and, uh, make a budget comment, maybe that'll help, uh, get the
Mr. Mayor, council, and audience, I just want to start by saying thank you to each of you for your really hard work. Um, I've sat and watched for the past few months, um, every department head coming up and all of the, uh, thought that's gone into the budget, I appreciate it, I appreciate your, your comments. I, uh, was surprised that there was, um, that there has been so few questions about what's being proposed in the budget, and, um, I'm a data person myself, and I'd like to just give you a little bit of data as you think about this budget this year. I guess I feel like I want to speak for people in the community, this is a time when people are really challenged, a lot of people are challenged right now, and, uh, I just want to have you just pause for a moment and think about them, I know you do think about them, um, but, um, the gentleman said forty-four percent, or you said twenty-nine percent, um, senior citizens, the data that I have says forty-four percent are, uh, of our households are occupied by seniors, this is from the Department of Housing and Urban Development from twenty-twenty-one. Um, there's a term that they use called cost burdened, it means more than thirty percent of monthly expenses are spent for rent or mortgage and utilities, and, um, according to this study, uh, let's see, the typical Anacortes household can afford a home worth about three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, but the typical home, this is as of twenty-twenty-one, so it's old, uh, but it's worth more than twice that amount, and, uh, almost half of renters are considered cost burdened right now, uh, thirty percent of all the households in Anacortes are considered house, are, are, are considered cost burdened, and more than a third of the senior households earn less than eighty percent of the area median income. So, just a few facts about our community, there are many people that are burdened. By my count, and I might be wrong, but as I watched all of the different, uh, department heads come up, I could only think of two that had a hold-the-line budget, and some of the budgets being proposed are twenty percent increase, and that's a lot, and that's a lot on our community, so just, um, asking you to think about that and don't be afraid to push back, that, um, the department heads are doing what they need to do, they're doing the right thing, they have good, good programs, but push back a little bit, I hope, thanks.
Thank you. Any other member of the public want to comment on budget? Council, I know, uh, Mr. Stefan's more than ready and locked and loaded to pull up the OpenGov should we need it.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you, um, I think I will have more to talk about once I see the budget book and the, and the CFP, that I can really kind of dig into it right in front of me, um, it's a little harder for me to do it right now without, without that right in front of me.
Okay. Yeah, well, certainly I'm not asking for council's vote tonight on, on the budget, we're just trying to make sure we understand what, uh, what other outliers are, the, the big questions that are out there, like I said, I've got the EIS, certainly this, uh, um, issue for Lee's hours, and there may have been another, another one that I've forgotten but wrote, written down. Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
Uh, perhaps Mr. Stefan can tell us what documents will be available in advance of the next council meeting, the budget book, the CFP, anything else?
Uh, those are the two that we'll be publishing, including the two ordinances that go along with those.
Okay.
Um, and at this point, there, we're projecting for December eleventh as an adoption date, so that you'll see them on the fourth, and then you'll be able to adopt it on the eleventh.
I think that's more reasonable than December fourth, uh, as an adoption date, since there will be some substantial heft to those documents, um, and although we get them on Wednesday for a Monday meeting, maybe we'll need more time than that to digest them, hopefully we can have some good discussion next Monday. Will those documents reflect the changes that we talked about at our October sixteenth
Um, I'm not, I'm not sure that I'm aware of what, what those were exactly, but I'd be happy to go back and look.
I think, um, reviewing that meeting would be useful for you, I, I don't know that you were there, I think maybe it was Steve, but, um, we talked about quite a number of changes, uh, to the CFP, as I think that that was the primary document we were reviewing at that meeting, um, I think we probably also talked about other changes when we reviewed the, um, other departments' CFPs, but Public Works especially, I think, had a number of proposed changes. I'm just, it's my expectation, and maybe it's the expectation of council, that the final documents put in front of us will reflect our discussion at the last five, six meetings we've been talking about the budget and the CFP.
Um, while some of the things that we've discussed will definitely be included in the budget document, I'm not sure that all of the discussion items will be, since it's sometimes difficult to follow exactly what it is you're looking for, and, um, since there's differing opinions, maybe, and not a full, like, a vote on those, but I guess, at this point, the OpenGov has all of the numbers in it, like, kind of the meat of the budget, and then the budget document will include, like, our policies and the salary schedules and some other things to go with that.
So, so I guess, for example, I've heard from three council members that would like to, whether or not we get funding from the state of four hundred thousand dollars, which is our best guess for EIS, but I haven't heard from the entire council, so maybe it would help if, you know, the entire council would say, hey, that's what you want, that's what you want to do, I think that's kind of what you're, what we're getting at from a staff perspective.
Correct, yeah, that's one of those things that there's no funding for it this year, and if that's definitely a will of the council, that that's what they want to see in an adopted budget, then it kind of has to, something else has to be cut in order to fit it in.
So, as the facilitator of this meeting, and I know that's one of the big dollar numbers, would the council like to see that, because, uh, again, my first, um, discussion, I think the Finance Committee brought it up as well, and maybe the Parks, uh, that the only, the only funding we identified for that would be Parks Reserve, so if the council is, is good with that, then, you know, we can present that in our, in our budget.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
So, going back to the October sixteenth meeting, we talked about the fact that there, in theory, is going to be four-point-two million dollars of FEMA money paid out for the stairs that washed out, so there was one-point-six million for the fire truck, three-hundred thousand for the ambulance, and then police vehicles, and I don't have a, a dollar number for that, but it sure seemed like there was enough to, there was enough for four hundred thousand dollars to go towards the EIS. Um, I, I would want to have further discussion before we just take Parks Reserve's money. Um, to me, that I understand that when we get FEMA money, the easiest way to deal with it is to have really clear line items that can be used towards replacement, vehicles are an easy thing to replace, EIS study is much more complicated to document and, and record, so, so I would like to understand, um, how this, how we're going to take it out of general funds, um, but I don't think it should be, I, I want to be clear with the public who may not have listened to the October sixteenth meeting, that it's not that we don't have the money, we are using money that used to be, the intent of that money was for Washington Parks, was for the stairs to access the water, I think it's important to utilize some of that windfall money towards the next project for the next generation to have access to the waterfront, and we've identified that EIS, um, component to be an important next step so that we understand the scope of work for that project, um, where access points will be, how much it's gonna cost to do, I mean, there, it's general understanding, but I am not inclined to wait another two years hoping that we receive funding, I think that this is, this is one small component, um, to use that, that windfall money in the same vein for access to the waterfront.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters.
And I, I think we discussed the idea that those, some of those funds are, are fungible, and it may not make sense to spend the FEMA money directly on that, um, but it does mean that we have an offset if we, uh, take money from elsewhere. I do not know that I'm opposed to Parks Reserve, because the Parks Reserve is actually just general revenue that we moved over into a different account, um, so, that's equivalent to general fund dollars in my view, we should be funding Parks regardless of how much money is in their reserve, because Parks are valued by the community, um, so it's, it's, it's just a matter of figuring out which, which are our priorities, I think if you look at the October sixteenth meeting, we did have a number of comments about a number of projects, and, uh, the Mayor Pro Tem who was chairing the meeting did confirm that the Gwimis Channel Trail was a head nod from everybody, uh, and there were others, I think, that there were generally head nods from council, if we need to, we can stop and we can make, um, motions about each ones of these things, but I, I'm not sure that's the most efficient way to get there, and I'm not ready to do it tonight, because now I don't have the document in front of me again, but, um, I do think it's incumbent on staff to ask questions if you don't have clear guidance from council, if we're operating in a more informal discussion format. Um, there are a number of components here that we need to think about, um, just as a couple of, a couple of highlights. Uh, we just heard from the Senior Center Foundation about the Assistant Administrator position, that seems like probably a minor amount of money, but it'd be interesting to know what staff calculate the, the delta at, um, we talked about a dedicated fund for pavement management to make sure that we are putting that money away, we talked in the Finance Committee about that, and I think we had consensus from staff that we could make that happen, I would want to see that reflected in the budget and be effective on this, uh, January one. Um, we talked about moving the Downtown Alliance design work, they have a couple of projects they submitted for the CFP, we talked about moving that design work forward in time, because it's a relatively minor amount of money, and it means that we would have that design figured out for, um, integration into the twenty-twenty-five comprehensive development. for integration into the 2025 Comprehensive Plan, because there probably are some tie-ins there. And of course, the Gwimish Channel Trail. I think there are probably others. The Fire Department is going to buy an ambulance in 20, or hopefully for delivery in 2026. Do, we can't budget for 2026 yet, but how are we addressing that? How do we know that that will happen? And do we need to make sure that we adjust the 2024 CFP to get that done? The Community Rec Center is listed in the CFP at $30 million, but that is not the current plan for the youth center, which is the current label for it. It's intended to be entirely privately funded and privately constructed, so not a city project, so that can come out if it hasn't already. And then I think we made some comments about several other projects that don't necessarily affect the dollar numbers, but may affect the description of the project. So for instance, the museum wants to build a building for storage next to the Carnegie Library Building, and we made a comment that, sure, that's probably fine. It's not, I don't think, next year. But anything that gets built should be compatible with the Carnegie Library in terms of architecture. There are a number of comments like that in the October 16th meeting that I think could be reflect, I didn't hear anybody object at the time, and could be reflected in updates to the document.
Well, we can definitely review the October 16th meeting and make sure we've got all that in there.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thanks. Yes, I just, I do recall a lot of head nodding at that meeting. And as far as where the money comes from for the EIS, I will, the Finance Department is obviously better versed at where it should come from, but I just think it's maybe overly simplistic to just think, let's take it from Parks Reserves when we do have the windfall coming. And I'm sure the Finance Department has the ability to move money around and maybe not take it from Parks Reserve. I would second Ms. Cleveland McGrath's comments about it was intended for Parks, and let's not forget that. And it will do a host of other great things. But let's get this done and figure it out and maybe not use Parks Reserves.
Yeah, no, I think I hear counsel loud and clear on that one, and that's fine. We have done significant both legal and financial review of those funds, so it would have to be some sort of maneuver, I guess, in order to stay on the correct side of FEMA. Because FEMA, as we saw with the Outfall Project, was no guarantee. You know, we went through a lot of hoops for a year. And so we're confident, we've budgeted based on FEMA money coming in and lined it up with the thing, I think it's Part 107 or 106 of the FEMA, of the code, that talks about what you can spend the replacement money on. But we can make those maneuvers. And I think, like Mr. Walters said, you know, Parks Reserve is general fund. It's all going to be general fund money. But I think, I think counsel is good with moving, that's kind of a big number that we wanted to make sure to capture. And I think counsel's good with moving that up in 2024. We still don't have an answer from WashDOT. We're trying to work them to get that, move that money up earlier, because again, we thought we had it, and then they said, well, 2027. Like, well, that's not the timeline we want to be on. So we'll still work that issue. But I think, I have some clear guidance that we want to get it in the budget. Funding, we're still not, it's a little cloudy, exactly. Mr. Walters.
And I think it's worth saying that that money that was programmed so long ago for so far in advance in the state's capital budget is still very uncertain. I mean, as we discussed at our Planning Committee meeting earlier today, there are ballooning costs for culvert replacement, that's transportation money. There's uncertainty associated with gas tax. There's uncertainty associated with the Climate Commitment Act. There's a lot of uncertainty with respect to transportation money. And so we may not see that on schedule or ever. We may not ever see that money for the Gwimish Channel Trail. And if it doesn't happen, or if it happens in a delayed fashion, we want to make progress sooner rather than later. And assumedly, having environmental review and a solid plan for proceeding with the Gwimish Channel Trail lines us up for pursuing other sources of funding, which would be my preference if they could be obtained sooner.
All right, any other questions, concerns?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland.
Okay, so I was on OpenGov logged in today and really had a challenge figuring out how to get to the stories on the Capitol Facilities Plan. Is that accessible for the public at this point? Or are we waiting until this Wednesday when it's published?
Yeah, the stories are not public yet. But as, with your login, you can see the information on each project if you're looking into the budget document itself.
Like the dollar amount, or actually more than that?
The descriptions, there should be descriptions and the various different text boxes on the beginning of the proposal.
Yeah, and it's really unfortunate that it's so challenging to get to the stories, because I know staff put a lot of work into getting those stories correct. So anything we can do, again, the public does not yet have access to those. The council does have access to those stories. But I tell you, there was a lot of hard work put in to make sure those made sense, because again, I think that helps the budget process and tell that story that makes it a reason why we would want to invest our constituents' money. Mr. Walters.
So in this packet that you're assembling for next week, any, anything that relies on OpenGov, I think we need click-click directions to get there. Also, I think it should go without saying that we should not have to log in to OpenGov to get this information, because the public should also have access to it. So anything that we're relying on that isn't in a PDF form in the packet that is in OpenGov, we're going to need directions to the public side of the site, I think, for that.
All right, thank you very much for your input and your comments. It will be hard at work to get this budget and CFP correctly to you.
All right. Thank you. All right, we are going to move on to Item 6B, which is Resolution 3138, Update of Tourism Promotion Strategic Plan. This is a discussion item with possible action.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I wonder about this item, since the Chair of the LTAC Committee isn't here tonight. Do we want to postpone it until he's able to attend?
Certainly up to council, but maybe if you, you certainly don't have to adopt it tonight. But I think you might find that it's a lot of administrative-type changes.
Better minor changes.
Administrative-type minor changes. And with that, Mr. Coleman.
Yes, thank you. So I did speak with Councilmember Young today, and he did not indicate that we needed to, that he felt that there was anything significant here that he wanted to be around to talk about. And so he did feel comfortable with it moving forward today. So, not to speak for somebody else, but this is an update to the, what was sometimes called the Five-Year Tourism Strategic Plan. This document explains how we use LTAC money and the goals and policies for doing so, as well as spelling out, you know, how LTAC members are appointed and the purpose of, purpose of the LTAC Committee. On the first page of your document, and I want to, I forget which page of the packet this is, there is a brief description of the changes that were done to this document. We apologize, they were not done in track changes, that would have made this a whole lot easier. But instead, I'll get up and try to show the council the changes that were done. So aside from, you know, font changes, marking this with draft, and moving around the city seal and title to make it look a little more, look a little nicer. The page numbers may have moved, as some of the pages changed based on the changes. So I think this document may have got a little shorter or longer. And then the first substantive change is found on Page 5, and that is just updating the Lodging Tax Receipts numbers. You can see that's 2018 through 23, explaining how much receipts were received by month. Previously, this had 2016, or older numbers, because this was drafted in 2016. This document also explains the process by which this document was created. And I know that some of the council members in this room were involved heavily in drafting this. So some are probably very familiar with how this was put together. The next change is on Pages 6 and 7, and it's updated to include recent LTAC award year and amounts. So last year, this shows what was requested and what was awarded. Obviously, again, this is just an update. The 2016 document didn't have this information. So we removed the older information and replaced it with the current information. The next changes are on Page 8, which describe, which is this chart here that talks about the annual events that happen in the city.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Coleman. I just noticed at the bottom of that page, Infrastructure and Attractions, the Port Transit Shed is listed on my copy, so I'm thinking that that needs to come off.
All right, thank you for pointing that out.
Sure, sad to do it, but, you know.
We could look to see if there's some new ones that are not included, such as Buxton's.
That would be a great addition.
And then on Page 10, there was a change that actually need to change back. The year 2023 was added, the city's 2023 Comprehensive Plan. It's still the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, so that actually shouldn't have changed. And so we'll make sure that that remains as the 2016 Comprehensive Plan. Or actually, probably just remove the year, because our Comprehensive Plan will continue in 2025 when we update the Comprehensive Plan. I have no intent to remove any goals and policies relevant to tourism promotion. So probably just remove the year altogether from that line. And that is, that is the extent of the changes to this document. They're prepared by staff and presented to LTAC, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and they made a motion to approve this document as is. And that is the process by which we got to this point. So.
Ms. Moulton.
Thanks. There's just one other thing that I noticed on Page 12, under the two types of goals included in the Strategic Plan. Under Number 2, about logistical goals, I would just end that paragraph with logistical goals that articulate how we intend to conduct our work. And I think that next sentence should be standalone, because it describes both of the goals above. In general services, goals relate to the services provided, blah, blah, blah. I feel like that should be separate instead of part of the second goal. Super minor, but I think worth doing.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I think that point is well taken. I think that's how it was originally drafted. So a new paragraph mark after "conduct our work" on Page 12, deleting the reference to the Comprehensive Plan year. Were there other edits that you had listed there, Mr. Coleman?
Two, the document is presented in the packet, no, those are the only, oh, well.
Oh, Transit Shed on Page 8.
Transit Shed and add Buxton's.
But did you get the notes down for Page 12? Because I'm, okay.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
I might also add that on the Page 8, where the chart is talking about the events, I could be wrong, but I don't know that the vintage market is still happening in the spring anymore.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland.
Yeah, I was looking at the annual events. I feel like we're missing a number of events that occur. Like, I think there's still What the Heck Fest. I don't know if we do Downtown, or we do the street closures for Open Streets. I mean, I feel like there's a number of things that could be added to the calendar. I don't know how important it is for this document, but, yeah. I don't know how thorough we want to get there.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
I would agree, Open Streets is in August, and it's not called What the Heck anymore, but it is, it is like, I think it's the AMP.
Yeah, I think so.
Music Fest, and they also do, yeah, and they also do one in September on Labor Day weekend. It's another AMP Fest. The one in July is the same day as Shipwreck Day. I don't remember what it's called, but those would be good to add. And even, you know, December, the Parade, maybe, and the Santa Run, and, yeah.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I just listed about eight different events, you know, just for this weekend. And again, you know, whatever the council wants to do here, but we could fill it up and we could continue to find stuff. But I think the main purpose is to point out that these are examples of the types of events that ideally draw in some tourists, but, yeah, Ms. Cleveland.
I guess maybe my, just so it doesn't get out of control, at least the events that are receiving LTAC funds, maybe in the last five years, be included in the calendar, because we've got, and of course, Water Alliance Seafarers Cup. Well, the doc is listed. Race Week should be listed, I would think. We gave them $25,000. You know, some of those waterfront car show should be included, too.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Hubick.
And I don't know how much we would want to dictate in a strategic plan, but as we think about climate resiliency and environmental stewardship and responsibility of our public lands out here, one of the things that comes to mind a lot when I think about tourism in public lands is 10 years ago, a dozen years ago, there was a large group that went out to Deception Pass Park and basically trampled a whole bunch of tide pools. And like, it just decimated the aquatic area out there for about, up until just now. It's starting to come back. So I don't know if that's like a bigot discussion, or if it's just a value statement that we try to promote responsible tourism without getting into dictating who needs to do what in order to apply for Lodging Tax Funds. It's just something that I know that it's important. We've decided that the forest lands are definitely a strong community asset, and so how do we promote things like that responsibly, for example?
I think you were recalling some important history where we've had some challenges with promoting the Anacortes Forestlands. So I think that's a very reasonable, I'm not sure what words we could come up with, but I'm sure we could come up with some good words in there.
Mayor Miller. Mr. Walters. Yeah, if we are to amend the Strategic Plan in that way, as Ms. Hubick suggests, I think we'll need it to come back to us to look at. And maybe we're not doing that level of a dive at this point. Entertain discussion on that point. I think Ms. Hubick's overall point, though, is really key. As we invite more people from other places here, they are going to be unfamiliar with the environmental values, the civic values, the sensitive areas that we have. Just as an example, this Just as an example, this past summer, I caught a couple playing with a seal pup on the beach like a dog. And I'm sure that they were from elsewhere and didn't understand that, among other things, I think that's a federal crime. But it might be that, you know, we need to have some broad policy that helps inform our general strategy of trying to educate people on these types of issues while we're bringing them here. So I'd be supportive of some policy language like that. But if we're just doing a dates and numbers update right now, maybe we reserve that for later.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. McDougall?
Actually, all points very well taken. I was noticing on page, top of page 14, basically, it's a goal, not a policy, but a a goal or a strategy, establish the City Council Tourism Committee, which I think would probably be a place where, and I don't know that that's been under discussion at LTAC or anywhere else. Like, we're mandated to have an LTAC Advisory Committee, but not necessarily a tourism committee. And that type of committee, I would think, would be able to do some of the more strategic work, like looking at how to steer the comprehensive plan toward, like, say, adoption of, I don't know, environmental sort of promotion and that kind of thing. I don't know if we want to go and create another committee right now, because we got lots. But that's just a thought that I had when, just like taking in these very well said points.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
For a bit of history, when we wrote this plan back in 2015, we did establish an ad hoc tourism promotion committee. Because for many years, the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee had three council members and the mayor on it. And that turns out as illegal. So we rolled it back to one elected official, one council member on the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee to make those allocation decisions. But then created a superset of that as the tourism promotion, whatever we called it, maybe we called it this, to help inform the writing of the strategic plan. So probably worth doing again for an update to this that is more than just dates and numbers in the future.
Ms. Cleveland?
We have a new economic development committee. That would probably be a good spot to assign this work to, if Ms. Hubick is okay with that, too. The third person is Mr. Young. So I think that that kind of makes a lot of sense.
All right, so with the, all, all sounds like good stuff. What's the, the pleasure for this particular document? Thinking maybe add some additional language and bring it back. Additional events, scrub, scrub that, but maybe not the big picture. I feel like we're going to have to update this after the comprehensive plan, but certainly, since it references a bunch of comprehensive plan goals. Counsel? Bring, bring it back with a few changes, but maybe not the big strategic changes. But the events, and some of those typos and dates and that thing.
I can address the tourism events and infrastructure in Anacortes section, updating that table on page eight. With LTAC funds awarded in the past five years. We'll update the infrastructure and attractions section on page eight. I will remove the year 2023 comp plan on page 10. I will, on page 12, section two, create a new paragraph after the first sentence, and then go into in general service goals, relate to the services provided, et cetera.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Hubick?
Sorry, Mr. Coleman, I actually have a few more. I'll just email them to you. But like, Spring Wine Festival isn't Spring Wine Festival. It's Anacortes on Cork at this point. On page 18, there's another reference to the vintage market. So it's just stuff that I keep noticing every time I look at it. I've promised I've looked at it seven times, and I'll probably have another one that I find tonight when I get home. So I'll just email some to you.
We appreciate your help. Thank you.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Yeah, I thought of a couple other events we could add to the calendar, like Fidalgo Bay Day and even our monthly art walk. So what if we did something like, we could email Mr. Coleman some of those, and maybe it could come back on the consent agenda with the changes he mentioned? And then the added annual events?
Yeah, you probably can't see the head nods, but there's a couple of head nods.
Okay.
Majority head nods, okay. All right, well, unless there's any more. This is open for members of the public if they want to talk about the LTAC plan. Okay. We are going to item, sorry, I'm out of order. I think we're legislative priorities? No, sorry, CDBG. I'll get the correct agenda. All right. Item 6C, Community Development Block Grant Balance Update, and this is a report, Mr. Coleman.
Good evening again, counsel, mayor, members of the public. So this is an informational item only. What I'm going to talk about is our community development block grant money. And we've got kind of two things happening right now. First, we're going to talk about our 2023 allocation from HUD for community development block grants. And you can see on this chart, it's 104,537. It's pretty similar to what we've received in previous years. Some information that we've been learning, mostly Stephanie Snyder here is our housing expert and HUD help person. Stephanie does all of the CDBG work, and she's been taking some intensive training this year. And some of the things we've learned are the IDIS grant balance you see right there. The allocated amount is not based on how much money we spend in a year. And it's not like a typical budget, say, you know, we have $120,000, and we only end up using 110. We don't get dinged for that, and they don't just say, okay, well, next year, we'll only give you 110. They continue with the amount of money that they have, and they allocate it to all the jurisdictions. And as more CDBG block grants are added to jurisdictions across the country, that number that goes to each jurisdiction may fluctuate or go down. So if ours has been going down ever so slightly every year, that's the reason, not because of our funding mechanisms and the way we spend it, or the timeliness of the way we spend it, or anything like that. So that said, we also have some funds left over from previous community development block grants. And that's because either we've been extra efficient in the way that we've spent our money, or projects have fallen through and mixed thereof. And so what this chart shows, this table shows is how much we have left. Also, from our 2022 HUD funding, or 2021 HUD funding, and our 2020 HUD funding. I'll go through what we intend to spend these funds on this year. So in 2023, we plan to spend that 104,000 and change on two things. One is a request from the Anacortes Family Center for Public Services. So this is not for capital-type projects, but for operating funds. And we're only allowed to use 15% of our HUD funding for operations. So Anacortes Family Center has requested 15%. They've done this in the past, and this is what the city has granted them. And so that's what we intend to use the funding for. Then the remaining 85%, there was a request from the Anacortes Housing Authority, actually, for $100,000. But we don't have $100,000 after we give some to AFC. So we're proposing $88,856 to go to the Housing Authority for roof replacement on one of their sites. And so it's a couple of buildings there that require roof replacement. Another thing of note is, while we have public input on their HUD grants, what we spend it on, and it's not something that the council is supposed to approve or adopt. So that's why this is informational only. HUD encourages, it's a very public process, so that's why I want to make sure that this is here for the public to review. And it looks like we do have an asterisk on this, so, you know, public comments are accepted tonight. But we're not supposed to have counsel actually say, yes, do this, this, and these projects. They want it to be a more broad input and not a political process. But they're not also, yeah. They're not necessarily very clear on that. So that was, that was what we planned to do with our 2023 money. Now we're going to go back in time to our 2020 funding. So this is actually a slightly different funding. This was our COVID funds. So there are different stipulations on what we could use it for, and it was a much larger amount to begin with. So we've used it on a lot of different things over the years. I'm sorry, I do not have a list of all of those. But last year, we had used this for the cold weather shelter. That is a partnership between Anacortes Family Center and the Salvation Army. Salvation Army, actually, is the one that gives out vouchers to people that need cold weather shelter. And last year, we gave during the winter season, a contract to them to perform, to give these vouchers out. They didn't use all of it, so there was $13,961 left. We intend to use that again and offer it again to the Salvation Army to operate cold weather shelters. And I believe they've already started offering those vouchers. And 2021, there was a remainder of $33,819 in the fund. So we intend to use that on a curb replacement project at 24th and Haynes to assist non-mobile and limited mobility persons currently living near the location to be able to safely utilize public transportation by use of a ramp to access the bus route. And you'll see this again in 2022. This gets back to our requirement that we can only spend so much on capital facilities and so much in operations. So we're, this project costs more than that, but we're going to take some out of the 2021 funds and some out of the 2022 funds. And then the remaining, the remainder is going to the Anacortes Family Center for maintenance to the temporary emergency housing shelter run by AFC. And then, as alluded to in my last statement, in 2022, we plan to use the remaining $17,649 for that 24th and H project. And that is what we intend to use our remaining COVID funds for. Yeah, are there any questions?
Questions for Mr. Coleman, and this is also an asterisk item, so maybe if there are any member of the public that wishes to comment? All right, counsel?
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Moulton?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Coleman, for going over this so clearly. And I also want to give a shout out to Ms. Snyder for doing such a good job navigating these HUD waters and figuring out what goes where, when, and where it can go. I know it's been a big lift, and she'll be able to continue to benefit the city by being really, really adept at this. So just want to thank staff.
Yeah, it was, it was a lot harder than just searching through the couch cushions.
Mayor Miller?
Ms. Hubick?
Does this money have an expiration date? Like, if we had just forgotten to spend it, does it just go away? How does that work?
Yeah, some does. I'm not familiar with those timelines. Are you prepared to answer that question?
Yes, if the funds are not expended fully, in three years, it is clawed back.
In case anybody didn't know, that's Stephanie Snyder.
Yeah, Ms., Mr. Walters?
Echo Ms. Moulton's comments. Thanks to staff for putting this together. One thing I think counsel would benefit from is a citation to the CFR that describes what our role and responsibility is with respect to this. If you could send us, email us the citation.
Yeah, we can do that. Stephanie's provided that to me, and it's, you know, it's a large section. Did you want to say something?
Many jurisdictions do things differently, and I was able to go to Walla Walla and have advanced CDBG training. And while I was in that training, there were many jurisdictions from California, Texas, Florida, everywhere. And there was a great heated argument on policies, on who gets to say how CDBG funds are spent. But what it boiled down to was keeping council members safe from steering. And it's a citizen participation plan, which is what HUD wants, is the citizens to point out where the funds should go. And so the annual action plan and the five-year consolidated plan for CDBG does go through council, and then all those action plans, but each project individually and applications don't go through council. So, and it does not say that in the sections of the subsections of the subsections of HUD, but the citizen participation plan is completely highlighted. So that was the proxy, it was to keep council members safe from being, you know, moving federal funds one way or the other. So anyway, I can send you what I sent, John.
And when's our next five-year consolidated plan update?
2028. Joanne had made the whole consolidated plan just before she left, and it was approved and gone through council. But I'll send you what I have, and that's what, so.
A little closer to the mic, I know.
I am sorry. But yeah, it's, it's interesting that every jurisdiction does it differently. And there was a lot of arguments of why to or not to do it one way or the other, so.
Any other questions for Ms. Snyder or Mr. Coleman? All right. Well, thank you very much. We are on to item 6D, which is Resolution 3139, 2024 Legislative Priorities. This is a discussion. It does have possible action there, but we certainly expect this to just be a first discussion. And Ms. Hu is pulling it up now. Ms. Hu?
Thank you. Evening, good evening, mayor, counsel, and members of the audience. Tonight, we're doing a first read of the proposed City of Anacortes legislative priorities. We're very interested in your feedback, and we'll get those incorporated into the, into the plan to be able to bring back. But we're trying to do this in advance of the legislative session. So just a quick kind of history lesson. So the legislature begins each legislative session the second Tuesday in Monday, excuse me, the second Monday in January of each year. And in odd-numbered years, the state budget is debated, and even-numbered years, it's not. So it ends up being a shorter period. So this next year will just be a 60-day window, and it will start on January 8th, and is scheduled to wrap up by March 7th. So I always like to just provide a basis for why the City of Anacortes puts together legislative priorities. The intent really is to give us as staff, as the mayor, good talking points to be able to then work with their legislators and ensure that the message that we are sharing with them is consistent with the city's goals and priorities. As you've seen in prior years, our priorities closely align with the Association of Washington Cities. This year, we've also taken into consideration some requests from the Washington Cities Insurance Authority, Skagit County's requests, and working with WASPIC and our police chief in identifying some additional information and requests for specific to police services. So we can go through, what I did is just tried to break them down into one slide for, for each of the different areas. So in public safety, we continue to ask for support in recruiting and retaining police officers for assistance with vehicular pursuits to continue to modify what they started on last year. And new this year is juvenile access to an attorney. There is a request that they allow juveniles to provide an- There is a request that they allow juveniles to provide an exculpatory statement. Right now, that's really slowing down the process because all the juvenile victims and witnesses have to consult with an attorney before they're able to have any questioning from the police department, their law enforcement. Are there any of these kind of three large areas that you would like to see any suggested changes in?
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters. On this particular slide, I think that there are cities in the state and the county that have substantial problems recruiting and retaining police officers. I think the legislature has not gotten vehicular pursuits right yet. I don't know that it's one of the City of Anacortes's priorities to modify the juvenile access to attorney statute. The, the law, the law allows juveniles to provide an exculpatory statement to police officers. They just, they can't be subject to a custodial interrogation before they are provided with an attorney. I'm, I'm not sure that the law as it is right now is in error. So I wouldn't include that one.
I, I know that Chief Floyd is in the, the audience tonight, and then he's helped to kind of create this and, and working with his, the Association of Police Chiefs. So it might be helpful to get a little bit of information from him to see if any of that kind of changes the perspective.
Well, I know, while he's walking up there, I know when we, when the four city mayors of Skagit County weighed in on this issue, yeah, probably wasn't a huge issue for Anacortes, but certainly in our neighboring, neighboring municipalities, they were having challenges with. Certain folks knew that juveniles could not, you know, they could use juveniles to do things that they shouldn't be doing and knew that they had that protection, so. But I do realize that we did not include it in our 2023 legislative priorities either. But Chief.
Yeah, currently, our practice that's required is to put a juvenile on the phone with an attorney. There's a statewide hotline that is staffed 24 hours a day. And any contact we have with a juvenile, when they are in our custody or, to make it easy to understand, they would not feel free to leave, before any questioning can occur, they have to consult with that attorney. To, to my knowledge, there's been nowhere in the state where that juvenile has been recommended to then speak with us after their consultation with the attorney. The issues that have arisen from that is, many times, it's difficult to determine what the juvenile's actual involvement in the particular investigation is without at least a small amount of dialogue with them. So, you know, many times, we're able to determine if it's a witness, victim, or a suspect without some initial discussion with that juvenile before we even get into more in-depth questioning or interrogation. There also is issues, we've had several examples where parents would like to encourage their kid to share information that they may have about an investigation with us, and they're not allowed to override that attorney's recommendation, which personally, as a parent, I don't agree with because you're trying to instill in your child doing the right thing if they have no involvement criminally, but they may be a witness. You know, being a good witness, they're not able to do that under the current laws it stands.
Ms. Hubig.
Thank you. I'll be careful what I say, just for everybody in the audience. I am a state employee. I am fully prohibited from lobbying, so what I'm going to say is kind of more with my public safety hat on and more of like what I've seen other people doing. But on the legislative website, I just did a quick search for exculpatory, and there is a Senate bill that Senator Lovick has introduced. It didn't go anywhere last year. I don't know if it's something that y'all, we would want to have on the actual priorities, but maybe for other folks on the council to know whether or not something's been introduced to be able to refer back to it and then to be able to decide whether or not that's a relatively accurate portrayal of what the city's priority should be would be helpful. And then, as it goes to vehicular pursuits, I don't know that we've actually discussed that a whole lot in the Public Safety Committee, and what's on here seems very vague. And I know that you've always got a lot of really good talking points, but talking points don't come across in text on a piece of paper. So that's just another thing to kind of keep in mind for what I've seen other people kind of do successfully in the past.
Well, Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I have heard from one legislature, legislator, that the likelihood that the legislature will take action on vehicular pursuits is very low. I would still include that because I think it's important, and I think the legislature hasn't gotten vehicular pursuits right yet. I do agree, though, that the language here is probably not very usable. Under juvenile access to attorney, though, I, I'm somewhat hesitant to rely on the positions of the Washington State Police Chiefs Association. I think here, the statute allows for more than perhaps what the association is, has taken the position on. I mean, it may be somewhat unclear until it's litigated, but I, I wouldn't stand on the side of, of denying a juvenile's right to an attorney.
No, no, and we would not deny them a right to attorney, but even our own elected prosecutor has interpreted the law the same way and is recommending that we put them in touch with the attorney. We're expecting that the attorney is going to recommend that they don't speak with us, and then at that point, we're left with the facts that we have at the point in time. The intent of this law was to divert more juveniles away from the justice system and avoid them getting into the cycles that can be present in juvenile justice system. And what we've seen is actually more juveniles into that system now because we don't have the information to determine what their actual involvement was. And those juveniles, we would just refer them to the prosecutor's office and the prosecutor make the decision from there. Whereas previously, if we were able to determine this juvenile was not a suspect, then we would process that accordingly. And there's plenty of crimes where, you know, being involved in the justice system isn't really the appropriate answer, and we're able to divert those juveniles to other programs to avoid them being further involved in the justice system. So I understand what the legislature's intent was, but I think it's, in practical application, has missed the mark.
I, I have, I have to make one comment on the vehicular suit, pursuits piece because I get asked all the time, senior center, talking state-of-the-city stuff, and when I mention, and I realize it's kind of vague in here, but the simple reality is if somebody steals your car out of your driveway right now, and that's all they do, our police officers cannot go pursue that vehicle. So I don't know how to put that in writing, but one person's opinion, that's not right.
And, you know, to be clear, our position is not that we want more pursuits. We recognize that those are inherently dangerous. We don't want more pursuits. What we want is the ability to make the determination when the risk to the community, but that individual remaining in the community outweighs the risk of trying to apprehend that individual. And that's a sliding scale depending on the conditions that are present, the time of day, the location, roadway type. So there's a lot of factors that play into that. It's not as simple as just certain classifications or types of crimes.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland.
I think I agree with the other comments from council members. This, this is our first read at it, so I'm kind of inclined to not necessarily decide tonight. The recruit and retain of police officers totally, I understand it, makes sense. Vehicular pursuits, maybe some more finessing on the wording, but I, I am fine. I think that it is not, as it currently stands, is, is not what the public really would like to see happen. So yes, that needs some modification. But I, I guess the juvenile access to attorney, I don't have a good enough understanding of the nuances of it to make it one of our top three one sheets that are going to go to the legislature. So I don't know if that's, if you come back and clarify it further at our next meeting, or we talk about it public safety, but right now, that's, I feel like I'm, I would just be endorsing something that I don't fully understand. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at, but I also don't, I'm, I'm fine talking about it again at our next meeting with some more information.
Mayor Miller. Mr. McDougall.
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Cleveland McGrath, actually. I would love to understand, especially number three, a bit more, because as I'm kind of reading it, I'm like wondering, you know, what are the protections to ensure it is exculpatory as opposed to incriminating statement?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton, and then, yeah, Ms. Moul.
Thanks. I, I would agree. I don't really understand what current process is versus what it was prior and what it's intended to be. I just don't have, I just don't have a good understanding, and I, I would need more information, but without that, I would leave that number three off. Yeah.
Did you want to chime in there, Chief, since you're here?
I can, I can prepare some more detailed information to present to the Public Safety Committee, and can answer a lot of these questions a little more in depth. Bring that back later.
Sounds good. Want to move on from public safety? And of course, counsel, if you can think of ads to that, certainly we're open.
Thank you for that good, that good conversation. I was appreciative that Chief Floyd was here. The, the next item is the request to revise the property tax cap. As you're aware, the, the property tax cap has been 1%. And anything above that requires the vote of the people. And so together with Association of Washington Cities, this is the first year that the, the city has also included that as a legislative priority to revise that. And the, the recommendation is to instead tie it, the tax inflation and population growth factors, but to, to keep a cap, but have it grow to 3%.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I've spoken many times about the realities of inflation. I think tying this to inflation with a cap is not unreasonable. I don't understand the tying it to population growth factors, because as population increases, generally, there's more housing, more value, more tax. Xu, is that, is the population growth factors in the Association of Washington Cities language?
Yes, it is. This is directly from the Association of Washington Cities, and so I'm happy to, to provide you a link to more information about that. I included that to all council members.
And they had a whole work group on this topic, right?
That is correct.
So it's not arbitrary language. They, it came out of that work group.
They have a committee, which I've been a member of in years past, that is a legislative priorities committee for all of the, the Association of Washington Cities. And so they had to come together and really spend specific, thorough time vetting about how these should be written, what the priorities are, what they are not. So yes, this was directly, and I'm happy to provide that, the more detailed information.
But I, I think there was also a work group specifically on this topic. Are you familiar with that one? If not, maybe you can send us.
I'm not, but I'll get you some information.
Yeah, the background, I think the population growth factor piece, reading it by itself doesn't really say, well, what exactly are you talking about? Provide more info.
Thanks for the great feedback. The next item has kind of multiple bullets, but it's specific to investing in infrastructure. So a lot of these come directly from the Association of Washington Cities kind of model priorities, but I do want to point out a couple of things. And the, the first bullet, the, the city has added broadband in terms of an area that we would like them to, to focus on as a state investment in infrastructure. That's something that I think that we're still culturally as a, as a state trying to, to work toward identifying that, that broadband is infrastructure. And then the, the last item is the investing in Washington State ferries. And with the specific request to fund an inner island, an international passenger-only ferry service until the regular service resumes. And as you're aware, that right now, the earliest it's scheduled to resume is in 2030. There is a study that is set to, to come out in mid-December where there was some money allocated last year from the legislature to do additional review of that, but we've not seen the, the results of that yet. The, the other items are expanding funding options to support state and local transportation, improving access to the Climate Commitment Act funding, and supporting the creation of state-sponsored financing cooperatives. That, that's an area I think could benefit broadband as well.
Ms. Walters.
With respect to the international run, do we want to set our sights lower now on passenger-only at this point, especially because we don't have the results of that report yet?
I think that the, the results are due by December 15th. It's probably likely that, that we will not be finalizing these until after then, so we certainly can take that off the table. There were some discussions last year with some private entities that would have been able to provide a passenger-only opportunity, but the, the conversation came at a point that they deemed was kind of too, the legislature deemed was too late to be able to address it. So we wanted to make sure that we had adequate time to, to start that process of thinking about it. There are a lot of issues as it relates to the, the collective bargaining with the ferry systems and how the ferry dock space can be utilized.
I would, I would also think that passenger-only service would directly compete with private passenger-only service to Victoria. And the value of the Sydney ferry was that it was a, among other things, that it was a car ferry. So at this point, yeah, let's flag that, and maybe we won't finalize these by December 15th when that report comes out. But I would, I would, I'm not ready to say, let's go down to passenger-only. I still want a car ferry.
Mayor Miller.
Yeah, Ms. Moulton.
So I think what they, my understanding was that the, they would fund it, but it wouldn't necessarily be a state ferry boat that's passenger-only. It seems like they would contract with a, with a private company, and I would rather have a passenger-only ferry service to Sydney than none at all between now and, and 2030. But yeah, I agree to, to, to flag it and wait and then see what comes out of the study, and then we'll have a better idea of what we'd like to say.
Yeah, and when that announcement came out from Washington State Ferries, their staff met with a number of private passenger ferries, because that's what was available, but we were too late in the legislative session to, to say, hey, we need X amount of money. We had some pretty decent estimates of what that would cost. So, yeah, I think we, I think we understand where counsel is on this one.
The, the next item is in coordination with Skagit County, and we probably have a little bit of word tweaking to do on it, but just wanted to, to make sure that we brought it before council, that we got the, the real essence of what Skagit County has, has put forward as a, a priority. And so this has to do with funding an expanded Skagit County Crisis Stabilization Center and adding a total of 48 beds to support the, the needs of all of Skagit County. So last year, Skagit County received $12.7 million to, to support this effort, and they're seeking additional $3 million for, to, to continue that for additional construction costs and for one-time startup, startup funds, to operating funds. So I think that it would be a good show of support. So I think that it would be a good show of support to, to be, include this as part of our legislative priorities. Okay, I think everybody's fine with that. Thank you. The, the next item is expanding, to expand and support behavioral health resources. And this is directly from the, the Association of Washington Cities, but again, there's just a continued need throughout the, the state and throughout the country to expand behavioral health services and support some additional state funding for alternative response programs. If you see any word tweaking that needs to be done, I'm, I'm open for suggestions there as well. Okay, moving on, the, the final item is in something that came to us through Washington City's Insurance Authority. So over the, the last several years, there has been some erosion of some of the defenses and immunities that have been available to municipalities. One large example where, area that we've seen this is in recreational immunity. And so it's really created what WCIA has, has deemed to be kind of nuclear, nuclear awards. And the, the impact is that the city of Anacortes and all of the members end up paying more towards the assessments to help offset the, the cost of these different verdicts. And so the, the request is that there be some tort reform that would help the, to reduce the liability and the related costs. That would then in turn would allow us to put our money in, from the community into community priorities as opposed to, to insurance.
Mayor.
Mr. Walters. Did WCIA provide any more text or explanation than this?
They, they did provide an kind of talking sheet to be able to share with legislators. I'm happy to, to share that with the, the group as well, and took the salient points out of it. And this has been a couple of years' discussion that the, the WCIA has been having and asking for, for, for help in this area. And now they've reached out to their membership and said, we, we can't do this without your help. So I will pass that on.
This is a, this is another one where I would be a bit hesitant because there, there are cases that, depending on how you look at the facts, it, it looks kind of extraordinary that a city be forced to pay for somebody's injuries, but there are injuries in every one of those cases. Sometimes very significant injuries. I think there have been a number of bicycle accidents, especially in Seattle, and they got great access to attorneys down there, and they end up suing every time. And they sometimes get big awards, but they also, I mean, there, there are people with a simple bike accident who are paralyzed for life or dead. And it usually involves a bollard or a pothole or, you know, something like that that sometimes a city should have been aware of. So I imagine that that's what this is getting at, especially because you mentioned the recreational use immunity statute. So I'm, I'm not sure I would feel comfortable endorsing a very wide applicability of, of this slide, but maybe something a little bit narrower. I might have some language suggestions if you send that, that one sheet.
Yeah, if I, I recall the reason it came up through AWC is that, that recreational immunity statute changed things. So not just the bollard to the pothole, now it's a, and now it's a branch that, you know, maybe should have been trimmed, and with, you know, 40% of our city limits in parks and forest lands, I think it's something we should probably take a deeper dive. And so we'll take a deeper dive and provide that info to you.
I'll get that information to you. Thank you. So I appreciate the, the comments, feedback tonight. If you have additional items then, that come up after I just provide some additional information, please do share that with me. We'll incorporate that into the, the proposed priorities. And then the expectation is I'll come back as soon as that report is out from Washington State Ferries, so he can make sure to incorporate that based on the, the most current information. Are there any other questions?
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Cleveland.
I was just curious, I know this is the short session, right? So that it's kind of the nitty-gritty, but I was curious if we'll have an opportunity, if there's other items that are specific to Anacortes that we would like to have one sheets on for our legislatures. These are great, or a number of them make sense that we should kind of champion, but I also think that, you know, if we're getting in front of them, and this is our one opportunity, it's nice to have at least a couple that are specific to our community where we can do an ask if there's extra money laying around at the last minute, as we all say, kind of ribbon-cutting type projects. So when, I guess, when do we need to have this kind of invite, and can we continue to kind of talk about if there's some other topics that would make sense to include?
We certainly want these to be Anacortes-specific and not just something that, that's prepared for the Association of Washington Cities. I think that there's sense, it makes sense for them to be complementary, but yes, that's the intent, the conversation that we've had at department head level, you know, is if there is specific information. So I appreciate that Chief Floyd shared with me the information, you know, with priorities as they relate specifically to, to Anacortes based on things that he's seeing. That we have made that request to, to the full staff. Don't have anything specific. Typically, I think what you're talking about is that if we're making a request for like a capital appropriations, that we'll do something specific to that. I don't know that at this point that we have that prepared yet. We don't even know if there will be appropriations. So sometimes it's a little bit last minute, putting together those applications and kind of one, one-pagers.
Yeah, and I guess, okay, and I, yeah, I agree with that. But some of the things that come to mind are, we've had a lot of meetings, we've talked about, you know, the fact that we're, we're expected to figure out a way to have absorbed population growth and, and homes. We talk about kind of, do we do some kind of multifamily tax exemption? But when we've had our meetings at our, at our committee level, the thing that would really get construction going is if it's affordable housing, how do we remove the sales tax, right, for all of that, for those materials? I think that there are some of those that's maybe not asking specifically for appropriations for a project, but let's start having that conversation of, hey, this is, this is what we're hearing from builders and nonprofits, that when they have to pay sales tax for, for supplies, you know, maybe that's one way to get it built versus trying to defer tax exemption, property tax exemptions for 20 years. So I think maybe we can have some of those conversations, and obviously we can't have everything, but a couple more items that, that work well with some of their requests on, for the cities that we're trying to figure out for the next five years or 10 years.
I think that everybody will agree that 2023 was the year of kind of middle-mile housing, and that was where the, the legislature had spent a significant amount of time and resources working on things. And I think that there's a little bit of intent this year, like, we have to see how that is working before we can really evaluate and bring back a, a new priority. So I think that that was some of the thought process behind what AWC had, and, and not having a lot of housing items come up in, in this ask. But I certainly will work with the, Mr. Coleman to see if he has any additions that he might recommend. And then I think that on Wednesday this week, AWC is doing a, like a lunch and learn session during the, the noon hour, where they are just doing a preview of kind of the, the legislative session and priorities, and that may be something that would be of, of interest. I can send that information out to council. Thank you for the good comments tonight.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
I would second Ms. Cleveland McGrath's comments on the sales tax exemption for multifamily housing. I, I thought that maybe we had addressed this in our 2023 legislative priorities, but maybe not. We did talk about it a little bit in the Association of Washington Cities' Housing Task Force that tried to put together some options for the legislature in advance of the 2023 legislative session. I advocated in that task force for the sales tax exemption, but it didn't really go anywhere because there was so much focus on just regulation. But the property tax exemption that we've looked at just doesn't, it doesn't yield you enough benefit, and the sales tax exemption knocks off 10%. I think that there was maybe some pushback from the county, the, the county caucus in the work group, because the counties also wouldn't get their share of the sales tax, but it's the cities that are expected to find housing for all of the increasing population, not the counties. And moreover, there is no cost to a sales tax exemption because it isn't getting built anyway. The opportunity cost is zero because it, it just doesn't occur in the absence of it. So I would advocate very specifically us pursuing that in our legislative priorities, maybe until it happens. And then with respect to items that are specific to Anacortes, the community forest lands maybe is not 100% unique, but it's pretty special for Anacortes. And earlier this year, we, we collectively burned down Lahaina as a result of climate change and invasive species and so many other things. What happens when that happens here in Anacortes? What happens if we get a really big fire going in the ACFL? That scares me to death. And it seems to me that that is something that is a compelling story that might suggest the legislature that they should fund wildfire planning in communities that have substantial urban forests, because you get a fire like that going, and it's not DNR land, and it's not state park land, and, you know, we, we don't necessarily, we're not, maybe not on the radar like everybody else is for that kind of thing, but it, it's a big risk in my view here.
And that might be a great thing to be able to include under this third bullet item about improving access to Climate Commitment Act funding specific to, you know, protection of our community forest lands.
Yeah, that seems like a good spot. And to Mr. Walters' point, yes, we did have the incentivized multifamily construction by allowing cities to examine quali, qualify multifamily housing projects from state and local taxes. So we did have that in our 2023 priorities.
You can add that back in.
All right. Any other questions? And again, feel free to send your comments to Ms. Hu if you got anything else that you can think of. All right. Being that there is no further business before the council, I will adjourn the November 27th meeting. Have a good night.